Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. Excuse me, and welcome to a special meeting of the Madera City Council. If we can have roll call, please.
Mayor Andrew Medellin.
Here.
Mayor pro temp Steve Montez.
Here.
Councilmember C.C. Gueyegles.
Here.
Councilmember Jose Rodriguez, absent. Councilmember Derek Robinson, Senior.
Present.
Councilmember Santos Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Donald Hawley, absent.
Thank you so much, Claudia. And just for the record, Councilmember Jose Rodriguez texted me and said he will be here shortly. He's just running a few minutes behind, so we'll acknowledge that when he arrives. I would like to ask Councilman Robinson if he would lead us in the invocation to start our meeting. If you'll stand with us, please.
Bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you with city problems. We pray that you guide us, Lord, making the right decision. Give us wisdom to lead your people, the citizens of Madera, and we give you the glory and power forevermore because you're worthy. Pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Councilman. If you'll join me in the pledge, please. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just for the record, I'd like to show that Councilman Jose Rodriguez has joined us.
Here.
All right. Moving on to the approval of the agenda. If there's no further discussion, changes, amendments to the agenda, I will accept a motion.
It's been moved to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Now, moving into why we are here, and this is our governance workshop led by Mr. Ron Manfredi. Ron, the floor is yours.
Thank you. My name's Ron Manfredi again. I have an extensive experience and background in municipal government and also educational government with the State Senate Community College District as an elected trustee. Tonight, we're gathered to talk about the governance model for the city of Madera. And by governance model, I mean there are various different models for municipal government. And we're going to talk about the differences and the role basically of the council in that, the role of the mayor, the role of the city manager, and other appointed positions like the city attorney and city clerk. Mentioning city clerk, I want to thank Claudia for helping me out. When you put these up, I like to put capitals. They bring things out. I don't know if spell check doesn't do capitals. I don't know how. But she caught several errors that would have been embarrassing. Thank you. And I want to welcome our new city clerk. Who's your name again?
Andy.
Everybody, who will start later this month, I believe. Or next month, because we're at the end of this month. So, our first slide is, says Zen, okay? And Zen is a form of Buddhism. I don't practice it, but I just thought we would entertain some thoughts. It's a type of Buddhism that stresses meditation and introspective thought. So, it says, "Student. Master, I wish to learn. Will you teach me?" "Master, I don't think you know how to learn." "Student. Master, can you teach me how to learn?" "Master, can you learn to let me teach?" So, if we were talking about auto mechanics, if we were talking about plumbing, if we were talking about law, I wouldn't be up here before you. We're talking about city management and municipal government. I've had the opportunity to sit on both sides of the dais, and I'm just sharing with you some of my reflections over forty-some years in public service. Unfortunately, probably approaching fifty-some years. The idea is that we can learn, and you can learn how to be better. So, that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about right and wrong. We're talking about getting better at practicing this form of government that we have. And what form of government is it, okay? It's the council-manager form of government. Now, if during the evening I say, "The manager-council form of government," please excuse me. I'm showing you my prejudice, okay? Because I'd often do that. In fact, I've been interrupted by folks before. But I'm just admitting a prejudice I have to you. Now, under the principles of the council-manager form of government, we want to look at how better to understand the relationships, but we're throwing one other equation into this, the council-mayor-manager. Because things really, the academic and the educational side of municipal government really haven't caught up to what is sort of a new form. And that's the independently-elected mayor, who has maybe some political and maybe some moral authority, but it's not necessarily in the government code. It's not necessarily your law, okay? And I don't want to say that Mayor Medellin... Welcome, Donald. I don't want to say that your mayor is not a strong mayor, but according to the definition, Madera is not a strong mayor-form of government. And I'll talk a little bit about that. Now, anybody care to give me an example? I won't call on somebody. I'll just say, "Come on." Of a strong mayor-form of government in our region?
Fresno.
Fresno, of course. Okay. And the principles of governance are the same, but the management principles and management structure are totally different. In our structure, the council, the full council, not the mayor, okay, the full council hires the city manager. The full council hires the city clerk. The full council hires the city attorney. And that's where it stops, okay? You don't not only hire anyone else, you don't supervise anybody else. And the problem is, is not that we do that, but we have a tendency, I don't mean you guys have a tendency, I mean we all have a tendency to say, "My employees" versus "our employees", okay? I cringe each time I hear one of you say that, and I hear it all the time. I know it's not necessarily an authoritative comment, but it shows a predisposition. Now, one other situation exists in this, is that this council, and by the way, if I, because we've got a time limit tonight, and I apologize, but it's not a time limit I put on it. If I am, if there's something you want me to repeat, or if you have a question on this, just interrupt, okay? And I'll get, I may say, "I'm going to get to it," or I may say, "I'm not going to answer that because, don't ask me about the apartment complex," okay? If you want to pay me to talk about that, then pay me to talk about that. We're talking about governance, not about individual decision-making. So, in your system, and it doesn't have to be this way except for the attorney, but you have the city clerk hired and reporting to the council, at least on paper. You have the city attorney hired and reporting to the council. With the city attorney, always has to be independent. You have some forms where the city clerk, especially a smaller city, is an administrative assistant to the city manager slash city clerk. In some systems, which are downright dumb, but they've been inherited over years, the city clerk is elected. City treasurer is elected. Terrible systems, terrible systems, but they were inherited from years ago, and then when you bring it to the ballot, everybody says, "Oh, we're losing our authority." You are really limiting your governance ability and limiting your expertise here. So, the city attorney and the city clerk are hired by you, they're terminated by you, they report to you on paper, but realize, realize that the coordination of their work, the organization of how they help the other folks, is in conjunction with the city manager. Now, is that a rule? Is that law? No. I'm just saying, that's the way it should work, okay? And if it doesn't work with you folks, and you don't like it, you don't have to do it. But you're inheriting and you're promoting inefficiency. Because the day-to-day operations are enlisted with one person, and that's the city manager. The city attorney is not here to administer all the decisions you make. The city attorney's here to say, "That's not legal, and that is legal. You better watch yourselves on this one, because you're treading near that slope, and it's a slippery one." The city attorney will tell you more things not to do than she will tell you what to do. And that's a good city attorney, and you have a great one. Now, historically, why this form of government, okay? Well, you've got to know a little bit of American history, and we won't give you, I could talk about this one for half an hour, but I won't. Historically, if you look back to the 1870s, 1880s, the time of Reconstruction, all the known as the Gilded Age, Mark Twain gave that term, we had terrible, terrible corruption on a national level. And on local levels, we had what you call machine politics, okay? You had Tammany Hall in New York. You had the Pennegras machine later on out of Kansas City. You had Mayor Daley in Chicago quite a bit later. So, in the 1880s, we started to reform the national government, and we got civil service laws, okay? Many of you are familiar with that. You have a civil service commission. Folks found out that things functioned better. So, you started to have independent city managers, but they usually came from what areas you think? Engineering, public works, and police, okay? Because, or sometimes fire. Because those areas were the areas that the city's limited government back then concentrated on. Post-World War II, we started developing the city manager industry, okay? Or the city manager trade, where you took public administration and you learned about everything, finance, public works, public speaking, et cetera. Now, some cities differ, and we've already mentioned that. We mentioned how the city of Fresno is a strong mayor system, and, but look at the stats. The council-manager form of government out of 485 cities, this information's a little bit old, but the point's made, that 97% are your form of government, okay? And this especially works well in the smaller, mid-sized cities. I always contend that you need to be over 100,000 to have a strong mayor system. You folks interact with each other. You see each other in your daily lives, okay? Whether it's church, or schools, or whatever, okay? But in Fresno, people may never see each other. The council districts are so uniquely different and far apart, that that representation is essential, and that separation. But you have to also understand, the mayor never goes to a city council meeting. The city manager rarely goes to a city council meeting. Why? Because that's totally a legislative body. So, in many ways, you folks as a group have more authority than individual, not a bigger budget, but more authority than a Fresno city council person. Because you're involved in more of the day-to-day and more of the interaction with the boss, the city manager. Now, a lot of times, and he'll probably be embarrassed by this, I'm going to refer to Ronaldo as the boss, as your chief executive officer, as your leader. And sometimes those areas will show more emphasis than maybe you've seen before. I'm suggesting that you listen to what I have to say, and you give it a chance to seep in and possibly practice. And I'll make those points a little bit clearer as we go on. Okay, so, right now, we have a situation, when we talked about Fresno, where you have the city manager, mayor hires the city manager, who in tandem with the city mayor hires everybody else, everybody except the city clerk and the city attorney's office. Everybody else is handled. Now, recently was somebody that went over from some other division, but he went over in the city attorney's office. So, does that cause conflict? Boy, that causes conflict. But it also shows you, like in other systems, whether it be our state government or our national government, the separation of legislative and executive. In our particular format, the legislative, you folks, actually is the boss of the executive branch. You guys aren't part of the executive branch. And what I mean by that is you're the deciders, but you shouldn't be the doers. Doesn't mean you shouldn't get involved, but there are obstacles and there are problems when that happens. And it's our, it's our nature, it's our tendency to get involved and solve problems. I want to start out by, and I didn't, by first complimenting you and thanking you. You know, your job is harder, and the folks in the audience here are not full tonight, but it's harder than people realize. It's more difficult, because you may have been elected because you represent an idea or some folks, but you're different now. You're management, okay? You are the board of directors of an eighty-seven, maybe it's seventy-eight. Okay, now he's inflating it. See, he's typical manager. Your budget says eighty-seven, okay? Eighty-seven million-dollar organization. That is a heavy burden. But yet, you've got to stand in line at the grocery store and listen to the complaint about the garbage truck. And so, that measurement, it's sometimes difficult for staff to remember that. And that's part of what we're talking about, taking that and balancing it with these overall responsibilities. Now, you have, I'm not here to criticize any particular area, but we want to talk about the relationship between the mayor, the council, and the manager, as a first point. We'll talk about more things as we get along. And the situation is, is that you can give the mayor, the plural, you guys, okay? You can give the mayor or the manager as much authority as you want to or you don't want to, okay? Because you've had, we've only had this system for six years now, maybe? Am I about right? Okay? Maybe less?
A little more.
Okay. You've had two dynamic personalities. Good speakers, good guys, good leaders. But there's no guarantee for that, okay? And the mayor, in times, has demonstrated wonderful leadership, and has just assumed a role. That needs to be confirmed by you, so as you go down the road, you can say, "Well, we're doing this." The person's not talking on their own. The same with the city manager. If you want the mayor, seven council people can't speak for the council, okay? Seven council people can cut the ribbon or dig the hole with the shovel, but they can't speak for the city council. They can show up at events, especially in their own district. So, somebody, the mayor or the manager, has to speak for the council at these situations. It's most logical for the mayor to do so, but the manager may have a role as well. What if you get a mayor at some point who's not as articulate as Mayor Medellin, okay? So, that is, that isn't, what I'm just saying, I'm not criticizing one or suggesting one. I'm just saying what you are comfortable with. Because if you consistently are putting your manager back here, the community will see that, and the community will, every time, when they have, or people of the community, when they have a issue, I don't need to talk to staff. I don't need, I can go to you. You've increased your problem, and you've really increased this person's problem. I'm not going to break down and say, "In this situation or that situation." But you pay this person the big bucks. Let him do the big work. Now, accept that, of course, when it's a big event, okay? We want to be out there, and we want to see that you were involved in this highway project. Put him in the back row with the shovels. This is where we want you up front. And when you're sitting right there, that's when you have the authority, when you're sitting right there. You don't really have that authority when you're out and about the community, because you're only one individual. And you want to be like this, and I won't show you the other sign, but it only takes one figure. You don't want to be like that. I have one little complaint, or not complaint, but concern that I want to mention about something that's also not in your rules that you use, that I just want you to think about in the future. And that's your ad hoc committee and the value of that, okay? It's not in your code. No reference to it, okay? So, think about this now. There's seven of you. You can't have more than three on an ad hoc committee, because if you have four, what is that? That's a quorum, and you can't do that, okay? So, you name two people, and whoever the volunteer, the mayor names it, you could say it any time. "No, wait a minute, mayor doesn't get the mayor, name it. We want to rotate. We want to do something like that." There's nothing in your rules that say the mayor gets to do that. I'm not picking on you, Andy. I'm just saying some stuff here that really I've observed, and I don't see the function of it, okay? Now, on ad hoc committees, if you don't have a staff member present that the city manager's assigned, could be himself, then what in the devil are you doing? What are you doing, you know? You're going off on maybe ten different directions. If you have an ad hoc committee, you have a staff person present, okay? Number one. Number two, ad hoc committees, they create, I think they create jealousies and problems, okay? Let's, you know, you have Donald here, who may have a different view on this, okay? And you have Steve and Jose, who are on the same page, but then there's maybe three other, okay? Donald can't make a couple meetings. The report comes back to you, and you have three other people who are completely in agreement with Donald's situation, and Donald wasn't there to express himself. I think that you should, if you want to look at ad hoc committees, maybe you have some standing committees on infrastructure or whatever, so you become experts on things. I would, I would ask your city attorney and your manager sometime to give you a little presentation on the role. I see it as a, whoa. When this guy gets going, I, sorry, you know, opinionated. I see this as a, what's the benefit versus the time this is taking, okay? I want my opinion. I want my professional opinion to come from my staff member, okay? Now, basically, the manager, if it's about, we've got a couple of folks on the council who are, really have strong background in organized labor, okay? See, I know you were vice president of your group, and Santos, I know that you were very, very active, okay? And you've got all this knowledge and stuff, but I wouldn't put you both on that same committee, okay, because we're have a slanted view, okay? Now, you may say, "No," but, you know, sure, sure you have a slanted view. Nothing wrong with that. So, be careful with the ad hoc committee. I don't see, and it's not in the county code. I think it's just some sort of historical thing, you know? And I see the mayor nodding his head saying yes. Think about that. I'll be able, you know, if I want to talk about that some other time in more detail, I'll go on for hours. You know that. Okay. So, the relationship with the strong mayor system is that the mayor is very strong. Doesn't mean our mayor's weak. It means that our mayor is part of a larger group. Now, there's some benefit to saying, "Mayor, could you represent us on this?" I think the mayor is a logical representative to state officials on official-type business. Doesn't mean you folks can't meet with them, okay? With county officials and those sort of situations. But if you're going to have people assigned to committees, make sure you either rotate it or you get volunteers. This assignment from the mayor, to me, is beyond the authority of the law. Now, if you guys want to give the mayor that, then you give it to them, okay? But I think it's more history, and as the council format change, not format, the council bodies change, maybe that'll pick. It's not a rejection of the mayor. It's just, "Hey, we're going to do this a little different," okay?
Question. So, in a case like that, would you say then that the council would need some form of bylaws or something that we can govern ourselves by? Something that we have written?
Let the city attorney kind of respond to that, and then I'll contradict her. No.
I have prepared what I call rules of procedure for city councils. I usually don't like to call them bylaws, but yes, you could formulate that. There could, I, by the way, I totally agree on the ad hoc committees. Just from my observation in the last three months, too many. And I think it lessens your professional staff standing with others, that they're negotiating or talking, because they, other parties feel like they can, they're looking at the final decision-makers. And professional staff sometimes don't feel like they want to give their full input, because two members of the council are sitting there that they know will disagree with them. But yes, you can do that with respect to the kinds of standing committees, or when you may need to do an ad hoc committee. I can say that I was in Fresno for twenty years, and there were, there was just a handful of times when ad hoc committees were used. It may be different now. Things change everywhere. But there are times when you do want an ad hoc committee, but, and it's limited, and you also use it more towards the end, when you want to reel the deal in, for example, if you're having really hard negotiations. So...
Yeah, in some, necessarily having a negotiation, you need somebody basically from that district involved. It fluctuates. A city manager is not going to step in and say every time he or she doesn't like something or is not comfortable with it. So, I'll put the city manager in that position. I'll take that position for a minute and say, "Ask your city manager, do we need an ad hoc committee here? Or would you like to work with us with the Public Works Director and report back to us?" You know, then you have a formal report. You have these sort of situations, okay? Don't give the city manager or the staff the excuse to punt. "Well, this was the committee's opinion." No, no. Why do we, why do we hire people? We hire people. And by the way, that was only the second time in fifteen years that a city attorney has agreed with me, so. The method of communication, I think, here is understanding, is that it's not you to the department has to the employees. It's you to the city manager. And the most, one of the most difficult aspects of being a councilperson in a town that you either grew up in or your kids are growing up in, this is your community, okay? This is your community. And the role that you take on as a city councilmember sometimes is limiting in the sense of what you can do, what you can say. You don't have to give up your core values, okay? But if you are out there supervising or telling folks what to do or insinuating, it may work that one time, but it will come up to bite you. And what is more importantly, it'll come up to bite this person, and this person will lose the authority and credibility. Somebody has to speak for the council. Somebody has to speak for the city, and it has to be as independent of an individual and as knowledgeable a person as possible. I know personally what some of you faced when you came on to the city council and how you were ignored. I know this. I know this for a fact. I know that some people didn't listen to you. But you've got a new system in place. Give it a chance to use the council-manager form of government. I'm going to tell a personal story here that involves a councilperson directly. And I've already told this councilperson this story. Again, I hate to admit how old I am. Back in the eighties, early eighties or mid-eighties, Andy's mom was the first Latina mayor in the history of California. I get goosebumps talking about that, okay? But before she was a councilmember, she was, and it wasn't directly elected back there. It sort of rotated. She was a member of the council, okay? And I was sort of a, she was sort of a tweener, because there was all these old white guys who, these guys, they had children older than me, and I was a staff person. I had to argue with them. It was sometimes kind of intimidating, okay? Because, you know, they saw me as this junior high, high school kid, okay? And Marge was in between that age group. She was older than me, but younger than these old guys. And I don't mean to say it disrespectfully, because I'm an old guy now. But she went to the city manager with some complaints, okay? And you got to, you got to realize, if you don't know Marge that well, that Andy's mellow compared to what Marge was. And Marge was just, she had to be. She had to be, because she had to claw her way to get some attention, okay? And Andy's had the benefit of, you know, all this exposure and great role modeling. And so, the city manager told her, "Well, I have three votes." You know, in six months, those three became four, and a few months later, they became five, okay? So, point being that there's a respect situation both ways, okay? And allow your city manager to do the job. Tell your city manager if you don't like, you know, start out privately at least, if you like the decision, but don't go and try to make the decision for him or stack the debt. Remember, you are different than before you were elected. That's the hardest... That's the hardest lesson, the hardest one to accept because everybody else sees you as, you know, Uncle Darren, okay? Auntie Cece, or Cia Cece, Tia, excuse me, wrong cultural, subcultural group there. But you are the board of directors of an eighty-seven million dollar corporation. And sometimes you need to say, I can't discuss that or no comment, or let me get back to you. We'll, we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute because I think it's one of the most difficult areas and maybe there are some, some, um, tools that you could use to help you out there. But remember also in your communication with the city attorney and city clerk, that your manager needs to have some involvement there. Because that's the person who's coordinating the day-to-day work. That's the person who tells the chief, check it off with the attorney, keep me posted, okay? And he's gotta have the confidence in those two people that are meeting on their own and come up with a good recommendation. The other aspect about that is purely monetary, okay? In other words, I don't wanna get into the finances of things too much, but your city clerk, your city attorney's on contract. That's great, it's a great most, I'm glad you went that direction. Much, much more economical. But billing's billing, time is time, okay? If you're eating up her time, you're costing your money. Two areas that you should be addressing the city clerk on, city attorney, excuse me. One is your own personal action regarding the law, conflict of interest, um, questions about, um, you know, a city clerk may be able to answer this one better, about financing an election, about your involvement. I don't mean only conflict of interest regarding money, but conflict of interest regarding party or relatives or things like that, okay? Or if you suspect your manager or a department head of doing something illegal or unethical. Other than that, you don't need any direction, any conversation with your, I mean, you can, you know, be polite. I, I don't, you know, I don't think you need any conversation outside of this realm with your city attorney. I don't see the reason for it. And if you can think of one, maybe we should discuss that. But generally speaking, most of your conversations are through your city manager. Now, during the meeting, absolutely. Close session, absolutely. Contracts, absolutely, but, but let's say you don't understand a contract. Let's still go to the city manager first. City manager will say, damn, I hope you wouldn't ask that question, go to the city attorney. But let the city manager decide that. Because then you're gonna get mad at everybody except yourself when you see the bills come in. I like to use the analogy of the city council, board of supervisors, trustees for the college district, school district, as a sports team. And it's not a perfect analogy, okay, so bear with me. Are you guys, you're the board of directors, are you the coaches? I'm using football here because that's what I'm most familiar with, but it works, it's the same with all the other ones. Or is the mayor the head coach? I say you're the coaches and your specialty areas. And the citizens are the owners, they're the owners of the team. Now, it's not a perfect analogy, but you guys don't catch passes, you don't run with the ball and you don't throw the pass. Your staff, there's a quarterback right there. But you do get, score the touchdowns, okay? You do, you do, and you do and you should get the credit, so because he doesn't have to get elected. And all he has to do is get elected by you seven folks. You've gotta get elected. So you, there's nothing wrong with getting the attention. Absolutely a good idea and you deserve it. But remember, you set the strategy for the defense and offense, but you don't execute the plays. For one situation, you may think you can execute the play, but it won't, it won't consistently work. It's dangerous, it's wrong, and if you want success, you allow your city manager to execute those and if he executes enough of those poorly, then you get a new one. I've really had some advantages regarding my career as a public servant. One advantage was fifteen years as an assistant city manager for the city. Fifteen years. The second was close to nineteen years as the city manager for the city of Kerman. Another one was serving as an elected trustee for seventeen years. One, one of our terms went five years, four terms, as trustee for our community college district. Another was for thirty years arguing at Thanksgiving dinner with my brother regarding what was more efficient, city government or county government, okay? Another was my wife, who was a lifelong school teacher and how to herd kindergarteners and first graders. But she also is a member of the California bar. She's a, she's a registered attorney and she would tell me why something wasn't legal and why the city attorney couldn't agree with me. So, I have a perspective that I'm trying to share with you to what works and what doesn't work. And some of these recommendations may go against our human nature, to help people, to answer questions. But we just, keep in mind, you're not the executor of the plays. You know, you're sitting here and saying, Ron, you're telling me what I can't do, I can't do this, I can't do that. We're gonna get into the things right now of what you do do and why you do them and how we can do them better. The first and the foremost is establishing a working relationship. And while I wish we had this session six months ago, you have a really new beginning here. And it's, it's really, it's really exciting and you went through some pain. You went through some difficulty and there's some gaps still. You've got a lot of positions, okay, that are open. Not looking at the quality or the, or the, or the arguments pro and con for changing those positions. They are changed. You have what you have now and you have a new city manager and that city manager deserves your support so that his success can be your success. The C A O, the chief administrative officer of the city of Madera, the manager of the department heads, excluding the city clerk and city attorney, but the day-to-day coordinator of their activities, okay? So, remember, it's only because your ordinance says the city clerk works for us, okay? In operation, the city clerk has to work super close with the city manager. And the city manager, having all those department heads and all that responsibility, is going to have some extra authority there. And he's the implementer of the city policy, whether they be the municipal code, city council ordners and the resolution. State, also, we have a lot of state and federal laws we have to accept. We have a, most importantly, the fiscal management of the city and a good reporting on that. And that's where I wanna give you some recommendations and suggestions. This council is absolutely wonderful regarding the community contacts you make, the partnerships you make in the city with your school district and with, uh, big brothers and sisters, uh, with, um, what's the, um, uh, the one in front, Madera County, Madera City County?
Cap M C.
Yes, okay, all, all of these, all of these. The, you do such a wonderful job there. But remember, you have, some of you, most of you have jobs, you have families, you have the council. Don't let your community activities and your community presence take away of those several hours you need to study that agenda. You have, if you can't study the agenda, just say, you know, it's too much for me, et cetera, because that is the information. And you know, they, they tell us, you know, folks will tell us, the, the, the press will tell us, business people will tell us, act like a business, act like a business. Yeah, does the business have to, um, hold the meetings in public here? Does the business have to pass their budget in public? Does the business have to have a, a public hearing on this and that? No, you use business practices, but you're not a private business, you're a public business. And there's a whole different set of rules on that. And one of those, not rules, but practices, is that you wanna see not only the verbal word, you wanna see the written word, because you wanna, there has to be a trail, there has to be the proof. It is incumbent upon city manager to prove to you and then you, by your decision-making, approve to the community that you've gone over the facts and the information. Now, the relationship gets a little tricky on some areas because they aren't as, they're, they're hard and faster rules with personnel and finance. But when you talk about spokesperson, um, it could be the mayor. I, I think that's cool. I mean, you know, um, it, you're not, you, especially if it's a public arena, public situation. When I was city manager, I preferred that I was the liaison with the state and, and federal officials, okay? Not because I was better at it, but because I was always available, okay? And that's the key. So, I would say that, you know, when Costa comes in, if it's a P R thing, uh, fine, great, be there, be at the, the event. You know, it's getting around election time, he'll be all around all these times, wonderful guy. But if it's a meeting to discuss something, you can be there, but make sure your city manager's there. Make sure your city manager's there. And most of the meetings, by the way, are gonna be with, and whether it's, um, our lady from, um, the lady from up north, um.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah?
Yes, yes, okay. It's probably gonna be a staff person, okay? And I, you know, let's make sure they pay attention, but the relationships, maybe, maybe there's already an existing relationship because of campaign work or whatever or just some older history. But the relationship usually is between the chief of staff or district director and your staff person, okay? Nothing wrong with the other relationships, you have them already, good. Make sure that you involve your city manager in that relationship. He maybe hasn't met some of those people. City manager is only as good as the council allows him to be. And the council is only good as you allow your city manager to be, okay? Because if, I, I don't care how many community events you attend and you should attend them, but if your manager is not known and respected in the community, it will hurt you, okay? And so, not only does the manager have to get out on his own and be in the community, those department heads need to be there as well. I don't have the, the, I'm not, I, I realize why you want people to live in this town. I realize that, okay? But I'm not such a strong advocate demanding that so much a hundred percent. You wanna get it as much as you can. I want the people to be leaders and active in the town, okay? I want them to belong not just to the Rotary, okay? I wanna see them at church, I wanna see them at the football game, I wanna see them serving hot dogs someplace, okay? I want them to get to know the community. It seems to me that you have already addressed that culture. And I'm, but you didn't have that culture four or five years ago. That culture wasn't there. So, that's a tough one. You can't get everybody to live in town, but if they do, that's better. But make, you know, you can live in town and nobody can know you. And we've had that experience before. So, we talked about what the council does, but what makes it, uh, what makes a good council person? Well, they understand that they're a legislative body and a policymaking body and that's the principle. That's your principal job. Any, any disagreement? I mean, seriously, okay, it's your principal job. You approve stuff, you approve important stuff, budgets, fees, financial policies. Now, we get into the areas that are a little bit harder as a human being to deal with. You're the employer, but you're not the supervisor of the employees. That is the most, that's the most toughest, the toughest, the toughest. That's the toughest, that's the toughest role to accept. Because you hear things, you see things, but you're not. It's not your job, okay? You may be able to influence that one situation, you may be able to, even though it wasn't your intent, because I don't think that personally, if I know of you guys, to intimidate, but you may be able to intimidate by accident or influence, but it won't work each time and it will undermine the process. You know, we set up, you have a civil service commission, okay? I was your, I was the city manager, the management of that civil service commission, okay? We never lost one case when we had the discipline and employee. We didn't do too many, but unfortunately we had to sometimes. I served after my role as elected trustee for state senate community college district, I served nine years on their merit system as chair six. Not as much fun as being a trustee, not as much power, but boy, you dealt with all the problems. The point was, we have systems in place and they're usually fair. When you see that they aren't fair, you need to speak up, but you need to speak up to the proper staff, the proper authorities. And usually, you have the information when you go forward with the personnel action. Usually, the process favors the employee to an extent. Now, you supervise the big three, as I call it, but again, realize that your supervision usually takes place of the attorney and city clerk at the meeting. Now, in your system, because you don't have administrative aides, which I'm glad you don't, it'd be a waste of money, but you do need to have somebody schedule appointments for you, schedule travel, okay? Uh, let you know what's going on and to give you that reminder call and that email call that you're supposed to be here at a certain time because, you know, so-and-so's gonna be here. That's probably the city clerk, okay? In some cases, it could be the executive assistant or the executive secretary to the city manager, which I don't think you have and you need. But if that's the city clerk, so be it, that the city clerk does fulfill that role and that's okay. That's okay to have that personal relationship. Make these reservations for me, do this, do that, because she will know the rules, okay? And, and you don't wanna tie down your city manager with that. Your, your city manager will always say, what the hell are you going there for? You know, this costs too much. You establish the goals, you're a strategic planner for the major project. You have the big picture in mind. You get to make land use decisions, the toughest decisions after those personnel decisions, okay? And you see, there's where you have to understand why it's not good for you to get involved in the minutia on personnel things and this, because that gets around. They, someone knows you can be influenced if power or authority or money or whatever comes along, okay? And if you show that you're subject to being influenced on these other smaller situations, then they'll see, they'll perceive a weakness. Not saying you're weak, but they'll, they'll, people will start lobbying you for these land use decisions. And the, and the beauty of the system is that your staff will come in and set up ground rules for traffic, for environmental, for architectural integrity, but you get to make the decision on, the final decision on those, but on the, really the important final decision, whether or not it should happen, okay? And also you make, and I wanna come back to that in a minute, it's on there later on, but I wanna, I have it fresh. When I'm evaluating the city, I think that's an area that we could be better in, that we're only average in standards, that I'd like to see the bar raised. That we, and, and guess, you know, when, when you deal with, with, um, the national, international firms, they're used to that, they're standards, you know, you know, they'll, they'll bluff you. And you know what they'll do is they'll treat you like a B minus community. Now, I had the project of Walmart in Kerman before I left. Most of you have driven by there and seen it. Go look at that project, it's beautiful, okay? They paid five million dollars in off-site improvements and fees just to, just to dig the first hole. And they wanted to sell me a C plus project. They want, because they just didn't wanna do, you know, and it was only gonna cost them a few, few million more, but they didn't wanna do the depths and the elevations, you know, you know how that, that works. That's just styrofoam and lumber, okay, and plaster. But we, we made them give us a B plus project, maybe an A minus project. And I think Madera settles too much for a C plus or B minus level. And I think Madera settles too much for a C plus or B minus level. Think in terms of this. A project is not like good wine. It doesn't get better with time. It's like mediocre wine, it gets worse. So, if your staff is saying, "We don't want a left turn exit, egress," okay, "out of that," and they'll say, "No, no, 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 we need that. We need, this is an important corner." No, the stoplight is twenty yards above. We don't want you turning across the street. Right, right turn only exit. In five years, that'll be a mess. In ten years, it'll be a disaster, okay? And that's some of the hardest things, because I tell you right now, and I've seen it both as a staff person when I was the assistant city manager, and I've seen it all around in my experience, that you'll get beat up. And I'm not dissing any local folks, but national, international firms are used, used to meeting standards. And you'll have your local little mom and pop store saying, "No, I can't do this, I can't do this." Well, you're, you're, what you really are saying is that, yeah, your side of town's not as important as the other side of town. That's what you're saying, okay? That's what people said sixty, seventy years ago when there weren't any sidewalks put in on the subdivisions in East Madera. Now, you guys, different people, but you guys, did a great job with your RDA in sprucing up the east side, putting the linear, undergrounding the, um, the canals, doing the linear parks and the walkways and, but by God, what they did to us sixty, seventy years ago by allowing no sidewalks, that was saying this side of town is not as important as the other side of town. That's all it was. Developer, you don't have to do this. And, and then thirty or forty year, fifty years ago, we did the same thing to, um, Granada and, and, and Sunset, okay? No sidewalks, backing out on a major street, okay? So, sometimes, and this world, Aldo has the, the expertise, um, and also has to have the staff, you know, don't talk to councilmen, don't, don't talk down to councilmen. You know more about the subject, but you're educating the person. You're not their parent, okay? And this is sometimes a problem with planners and engineers and those guys. Getting off a little tangent here, and I don't mean to be in a lecture tone, but it's my style, okay? So, bear with me. You have a situation where you're the one responsible for keeping the, the, the developer, the builder in line, okay? One time, I had a conversation, it was, and CC, I hope you don't mind me mentioning this conversation, when you were very early with the council, and you were gonna, you were talking to me about a particular developer of the past who was going, going to appeal to, to put in, putting in some park space. And I said, "CC, it's not negotiable. It should've been, this is what you do. You develop in Madera, and you do A, B, and C." Okay, C, yeah, we'll negotiate a little bit on C, but no negotiations on A and B. Those are the fees, those are set. Now, different type of development? Certified low-income housing? Yeah, you can forgive them. RDA used to pay for some, a job that brings in twenty dollars an hour wages? You wanna, you wanna do some, you wanna negotiate the fees? Think about it. I don't like those agreements. State of California is already saying you can't do some of them, but those are the ones you do. But a regular subdivision, that costs you money. You lose on a regular subdivision. Doesn't mean you don't need them. Again, I get a little bit emotional on this, I get a little, going a little bit fast, but realize that historically, your standards haven't been maybe as high as they should be. And that may be one reason that you're not attracting some of the development that we miss out on sometimes. Think about that. The council member, as we said, keeps their eye on the long-range goals. Doesn't have to be said, but it needs to be said. Doesn't not interfere in day-to-day operations in one of the most difficult situations, because, again, it's human nature. Stays clear of personnel decisions, except for closed session and department heads, but there's even limits on that, okay? The situation is, is that your department head was hired for a set of, of expertise, for a knowledge. That department head may not be the best personality in the world. May not be even the nicest person. That's for Arnaldo to work on. But you're not all going to be wonderful, friendly, nice guys like Arnaldo, okay? You're gonna have some people who don't have great personalities. There's a market out there, okay? And you have to be very careful about being in a market where some people saying, "Gosh, look at the turnover there, okay? Look at this, what are they saying about that?" So, you have to be careful of that. I'm not saying careful, you have to be cognizant of that, just being aware of that. A good council person obviously does her homework and reads the general reports, and you mentioned it, understands the fiscal needs and limitations, and understands that they are, you are a board of directors. That's what your job is, you're a board of directors. You're not the personnel director, you're not the finance director, you're not the Parks and Community Services Director. The best way that you can show that you support those departments is to go to those ribbon cuttings, to go to those community nights, and boy, again, maybe your police department oughta conduct some public relations training for everybody else. Because, boy, you know, did Steve Fraser and their current administration do a wonderful, 'cause that, that wasn't always there, okay? And it's not like all those officers says, "Oh, yeah, let's go out and do breakdancing," okay? He had to pull some teeth to get there. And he did such a wonderful, wonderful job. And remember, I'm limited to the area police chief. But the situation is, is that you have a police department that's out there energetic, they're, they're mixing with the community. To a great extent, they're reflecting the community and their backgrounds and cultures. It is, it is pretty, pretty amazing, and you oughta be proud of it. Let's see if we could expand that good PR, all the other ones. We talked about what the council does. And let's talk about now, a little bit about behavior. I use the word empowering. By their support of the city manager, the council empowers the city manager to get things done. And you have to understand how some staff will react, okay? And let's go back to a situation where in two thousand and ten, you guys, again, not only you were here, it's council members, but you're the body, you're the body that you represent. Your staff took development impact fees, had not been increased since two thousand and seven, and just by a tiny bit. They were some of the lowest in the valley. And what, 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 what happened between two thousand and seven and two thousand and ten? The economy fell apart. You're not gonna raise fees when the economy's sinking, okay? That was two thousand and ten, economy's booming. That was what, nine years ago? I don't know why the staff never brought them, never brought them up again. But I think they were gun-shy, okay? Now, my style was on my job to bring it up to you. You know, you're gonna hear it, and here it is, and here's what you need. So, if I got turned down, if I believed in it and I got turned down one year, you're gonna get a presentation from, I might tweak the presentation a little bit, okay? I might not give, I have the city engineer give it. But the point is this, if your staff is gun-shy, if they're used to hearing no, okay? If they don't want you to present it, sometimes it gets modified, unfortunately. I think Arnaldo won't do that, but if it's done to him enough, if rejection is there enough, who knows what will happen? The successful manager has council support. But it's not blind support, okay? Again, that's why your roles, explain to us how this fringe benefit package worked. You just came in here for a modification of a fringe benefit package. You're gonna do, and that's what happened to you way back in two thousand and three, two thousand and five, two thousand and ten, when you got these crazy benefits which you've changed to your credit. But they were accumulative, not enough questions were asked. Understand the motives, we, I, I stressed this before, but now it's a time for me to go a little bit stronger on it. Understand the motives behind lobbying. And I'm, you know, all you folks, longtime Maderans, you're popular people, you have nice families, people know you well, you volunteered here and there, but everyone noticed how you all of a sudden had a kinda new set of friends? Folks that hardly even you knew before? Gosh, how, how neat, man, you know? Um, I never, I never call you about anything. You call me, you know, I, 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 I call your, um, your Parks Department, hey, give them a compliment about how nice they're doing, um, uh, doing the landscaping on the island. Then give them hell for not watering the redwoods, but that's, okay? But I'm, I'm not gonna talk, okay? Most of the people who are lobbying you, they're not wrong. It's their job to lobby you, they have a vested interest, okay? And a vested interest doesn't have to be business. It could be, it could be the, um, United Way. It could be, um, the high school football team. It could be this, it could be that, it could be a subdivision. But realize that their perspective, just like mine is here, is that I can't see the audience. I don't know if somebody's going it this way or going like that right now. That's the perspective I have. I have your perspective, and I react to your images and your, and your, and your expressions. I will, this is not a regular council meeting, so I'm not trying to educate the public on anything, but occasionally, I'll look to them just out of courtesy or out of, you know, to, to change my style a little bit, to see if I'm putting them to sleep. But we're trying to stress to you that just understand they're trying to influence you, okay? And don't, don't accept these things, "Well, this is not good government, et cetera." You know much about as good government as they do, okay? You're going to have a, a, a slatted presentation. Now, it's not that the staff presentation is always correct, but it is usually coming from a professional standard. Realize that you have a situation where people who are sometimes the most difficult to deal with regarding development, and also the most difficult for you, because these are your friends and neighbors and you like them, okay? Or maybe you don't like them, but don't wanna hear from them again. They have a perspective, they, they're leaning towards something, and they may not care about how that intersection, how that development looks in ten years. I got a, uh, to give you a personal story about, as city manager, I, and these two council members represented the, the two extremes. Not the two extremes, just two different approaches. Councilmember A would always come in and say, "Man, Freddie, you're, you're, you're inspector. He was over there, and, you know, I saw him sit in his truck for twenty minutes, and he was drinking a soda, et cetera, and, and he, uh, then he came in and he wrote me up, or he wrote my neighbor up for this, or they wrote the plan up for this, and we were only watering so many minutes, et cetera. You better get his butt off and get him to work and et cetera." Or, or more likely, Farmer Jones was in the other day, and he told me that when he was driving down Main Street, he saw the Public Works crews out there, and there were three guys over here and five guys over here, where two of his guys could've done it. Two of his illegal workers, but, okay? Then, councilmember B would come in, and he would say, "Ron, here's what I heard. What's the other half of the story?" That's the one that got my, I mean, I, I looked at both of them. Sometimes, councilmember one was actually right, but his style was really bad, okay? And didn't put me on the defense as much as it put my staff, but, but it did, to some extent. But it was, the councilmember B would say, "Here's what I heard. What's the other half of the story?" And you know what? There's almost always another half of the story. Because Tia Isabella, or Sia Jane, or Cousin Philip has their own perspective. And boy, this is the hardest part of your job. But realize that your staff, most of the time, and a great deal of the time, has a professional perspective, not necessarily, now, they don't make, they don't always sell it so well, okay? And that's the situation that, well, Aldo, I'm sure, I'm sure he's assessed these things and will be looking at. You gotta be able to sell it. Now, one of the situations is, is that we have to make some assumptions. And our assumption is the manager knows what he's talking about, and the staff knows what he's talking about. But if, but if they're up here and, and, and they don't sound like they know what they're talking about, in a professional and friendly question, challenge them. Say, "You said this, but I remember six months ago, you said this. Tell me what this..." Well, yes, but I forgot to tell you, six months ago, there wasn't a law. Now, they passed a law. California always does that to us. You gotta get a code of ethics. So, our, 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 city attorney talked to, talked to us about, didn't call them bylaws, but that, but that's not, the code of ethics is different. And, and these things are some boilerplate material, and you can take that and then modify it just a little bit to suit some of your own behavior and your own interest. And your, and your attorney will guide you on that, and it's not that difficult. It's there, the League of Cities does it, the International City Manager Association does it. It's out there, and we need that for our community. Then I have this one, and I'm gonna ask you guys to help me on the presentation of, of, of the term, how do you, is that Slatic? S-L-A-T-I-C, Slatic? Is that, anybody, anybody know who I'm talking about? Oh, got you.
Board of trustees?
Yeah.
Of the school district?
Yeah, President Unified. There's a crazy man out there, he's a nut. This is this, and, 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 and it has nothing to do with him being a Marine, but this is a retired Marine major. And the reason why I mentioned that was, uh, one of the confrontations he had was with the, um, the Army recruiter, who was, of course, only a sergeant on campus, and he told him, "What the hell are you doing here?" And he just, and he just lectured him. Then he goes in and talks to the, uh, goes to the cheerleaders, and, and he tells the cheerleaders that, uh, because they, they did some, uh, they protested some terrible gestures by their fellow cheerleaders and, and wearing, putting pictures of blackface up. Then he said, "Don't you girls talk about this anymore? It's, it's a negative mark on..." Then he went to the wrestling practices and told the coach to counsel a wrestling practice with another school. Then he, of course, confronted, the first one was where he confronted the other, the kid who got smart with him and physically, uh, hit, pushed the kid. None of you guys are like that, you know you're not like that, okay? But on a smaller scale, there is, there should be a concern about where you go and how you go about going where you go. What do you mean? CC, what's the rule of folks, trustees, anybody coming on campus? What's, what's Madera Unified School District?
You have to check in.
Check in.
Check in with the?
The office.
Okay, do they?
Get a badge if they don't.
Do they let you know, what, what if they come to your class? They let you know in advance, or they just peep in?
They, we don't have to know in advance.
Would you like to know in advance?
For me, it doesn't matter, but a lot of teachers do.
I think most teachers would, okay, okay? All I'm saying is that nobody's keeping you away from, from, uh, the shop, okay? And, and maybe you have some good ideas, but, I don't know. Have some, have some courtesy about that. One of the areas, look, the city manager's door is always open, right? Okay, there's seven of you. Let's say that you take an hour a week to talk, call up, send emails to city manager. Not much, huh? Seven hours a week, and that's, let's throw one more hour on that. Well, not really, 'cause city manager works nine or ten hours, doesn't he? But let's say, let's take one more hour on that to coordinate the emails, read them, um, answer phones, reschedule appointments. You're late, he's late. That's, that's a whole day. That's a whole day out of his work schedule. Are you saying, Ron, that I shouldn't talk this? No, I'm just saying, be cognizant of it. If you can, you know, it's okay to drop in and say hi to city hall folks, but if you really want a half an hour's time, make the appointment, okay? Sometimes, you'll say, "Hey, God, I meant to call you, let's get together for a minute." Sure, but just be cognizant of those things. I could be kind of, of, um, smarty pants sometimes when talking to the press to see if they enjoyed the, my weird sense of humor. But when I was in, um, city manager at Kermit back in the late nineties, we were booming. We were getting, we were getting articles in the, in the Business Journal, we were getting on TV, a lot of good things were happening. We were doing some nice growth, we were doing some nice physical improvements. And a reporter from the Fresno Bee, and we were getting a lot of nice coverage from the Bee. And the reporter from the Bee said, "How do you, how do you account for all this success that Kermit's having?" And I said, this was a smarty pants answer, I said, "Most city managers have to babysit their council fifty percent of the time. I only have to five percent of the time." And what I meant by that is that they always coordinated through me. They didn't go to departments. And I even had city council members who had been former, former, um, I mean, I even had a, a city council member who had been a former in, in, uh, city council member who had been former employees and vice versa, small town, okay? And so that was not too easy for them when they had been an employee and they became a city council, not to say I know it all. I had more problem with some of their wives calling the police department. I'm just saying that, realize these small things. Ask yourself, "Am I really doing research, or am I, am I trying to influence something? Am I really doing research, or am I spying on something?" Ask yourself what your motivations are. Be, be true to yourself and realize that you have some limits. I remember when I was, was chair of our Board of Trustees, I didn't, I didn't like being chair as much as I liked being a board member. I couldn't promote my own agenda as a chair. I had to, I had to listen to everybody else and make sure everybody else had a chance to talk. You know, I couldn't be that, that, that wise guy from Madera promoting our campus as much. It was a hell of a fight to get that campus here. So, but I had to check myself. And that's what I'm asking you, when I say avoid the slatic behavior, tendencies towards that. Not necessarily that one of you would act in that way. Another area regarding the behavior is to expect a reasonable amount of information and feedback. You know, in other words, ju- just don't always say yes, shake your head yes to something. If something doesn't make sense, ask for, for their explanation. You're not supposed to be experts in every field. Sometimes the reports are written in a technical way. And I don't accept that your, that your, your, your information is not explained to you. I, but your reports are pretty long, maybe they could be, maybe they can be shortened, but again, sometimes we work on the idea of who's gonna sue us, so we have the answer in those, those situations. But the burden of proof is on these guys. The burden of proof's on these folks right here. So they have to show, especially when the subject matter is going to be sensitive, or that might have a difficulty of the community. And that's what we did not look at regarding when our water rates are sky high. It's not they weren't needed, it's why were they needed? You need to make demands, but you have to make them within the context of your resources and the workload. Right now, you have a void regarding some department head positions. And you can't expect the city to operate on the eight cylinders that normally would operate on. So you have to have some patience there. But you also have to rely on a good system of selection process, okay? And you may decide that you want council members on some of these interview panels or not, but it shouldn't be dominated by council members, it should be dominated by professionals in the field. So demanding within the context of the workload and the priorities. And getting personal to personal history here. We've had a couple of years of turmoil. There's been some emotions, there's been some anger, and there's been some serious differences. But it's time to say, whether we like it, whether we like the outcomes in each particular sub-area, we have this management and this council, and we're a team. Don't always have to like each other to respect each other. Don't always have to agree with each other to follow a code of honor or a code of conduct. You've got to look at appointed admission returns regarding how long some of the council meetings go. You have to look at a situation where it's getting to the point where I'm either so weary or I'm so irritated I can't make a good decision. I can remember when my council meetings went to eleven, twelve, one o'clock. And we decided as a group that we weren't gonna do that. And then my mayor would give me the, because as you notice, I can talk for a long time. But that wasn't it, it was the arguments. It was the arguments. You know, and, and I went there and a recall was going on, so I know that that's, you haven't had, I mean, I mean a major recall, it was really major. It's time to, 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 to put our, our past behind us and establish priorities toward the future. And the best way to do that is say, "City manager, see, you know the priorities. Priorities ain't hard. It's how to get there and how to implement them." I mean, we need a first-class water system, we need a good first class sewer system, we need you to attract more economic development. You know what the priorities are, generally speaking. Don't redo those, don't add a whole bunch to it. But maybe you need to have the manager come back to you and say, "Here's what I wanna attack first, I'll attack these other things, and I wanna do it this way, and I want to be able to convince the folks that we need more money here, or we don't, or we can't do this because of that." Remember, with the general fund, you can do just about what you damn well please, but you don't have the resources to do most of it. The system that we have in California hurts cities. You get a fraction, a penny out of the sales tax, a penny and a half with your gas tax override, you know, now with your, uh, what's it, G?
K.
K, K, okay. Um, so you get a little bit more now, but, but, boy, it, it's stacked against you. Local government, they kept on saying local control, they don't give us the money to do the things we need to do. So we need to upgrade our standards so we can attract more folks, more folks with money in their pocket, and more places to spend money. It's time to put the past, the past is the past. You really have to drop, and I'm not accusing, this is with any body that, that's come together after some turmoil. You really have to drop those grudges or those, what you consider wins or loses, and go forward with a list of can do's. Because I tell you one thing, it's really in your hands. It's, it's, we, we've got a lot of authority as a, as a, as a community body, as a municipal government. Uh, we have limits, but we have a lot of authority. And I think, again, you've shown that with your renewed cooperation with the county, your cooperation with the school districts, wonderful, just great. Now you have to cooperate amongst yourselves. So who do you, who do you trust in this process? You, well, you, you use basic courtesies. You look at public pressure and you see what's real versus what's perceived. You've got a lot of public criticism, but you also have a lot of public support. You know, this, uh, when you, when you, when you go on and you see the activities, I think we're gonna have, uh, one of our first night outs in our, our, we never had them in our community, in our neighborhood, we're gonna have one. And it, those things are, are liked and they're well, uh, well attended. But making difficult decisions first requires that we listen. Now, I would say on an average, when difficult things come up, especially if it's development or code enforcement, that your staff is pretty objective. Not always, but they're probably more objective than maybe that neighbor or citizen you're listening to. Doesn't mean you have to side with the staff. But my attitude was always, tie goes to my employee. Sorry, that was my attitude. Because now, if I couldn't trust that employee, that employee didn't stay around long. But tie, I'm not, you know, sometimes there's overwhelming evidence where the employee's wrong. But normally, especially in development and enforcement issues, your staff is well informed. I often would describe that, that working with council is like herding cats. I don't mean to, to insult anybody. But I only had five council people. Seven's tough, you're, you're seven different personalities. Seven different work backgrounds, cultural backgrounds. The one thing you have in common, which is a great one, is dedication, hard work, and love of Madera. But managing the council is time-consuming, okay? So you have to respect that. And you, and the manager needs to know that you're not doing things behind the manager's back, whether you intended to do it or not. That's not, the intention's not, not the problem. It's what happens. And realize that your relative, the citizen, the business person, is not necessarily lying to you. They just ain't telling you the whole story, okay? I mean, the situation is, is that I don't, and, and don't get me wrong, there's, there's petite petty bureaucrats, no doubt about it. But for those of you, those of us who've worked in public service, for the most part, people are pretty dedicated and pretty honest, okay? But they're saying no. Okay? I always tease my firefighter buddies. "Yeah, sure, everybody loves you guys. Here, get a speeding ticket." You know, you never, you never, uh, uh, you know, get behind me and, and make me feel like you're trailing me, you know? What I'm trying to point out there is that your police department's done a wonderful job of taking a, what used to be perceived as a negative job into, into a community relations job, okay? The situation is, is the water patrol guy can't do that, right? It's hard. Now, a wonderful chief that I would work with, Gordon Skeels, passed away several months ago. Gordon was also a council meeting later on. And we were talking, and he was ready to discipline this guy. And I said, "Well, tell me, how do you, how do you, how do you tell when it's out there and you're not there and people are complaining?" He goes, "Well, you gotta sell a ticket, Ron. Nobody is pleased with a ticket, but when you give that ticket, if you're polite and you're nice and you're understanding, and you let a few of them go." So I've got one officer who gives out ten tickets a month. Five of them, people complain. I've got another officer who gives out twenty tickets a month. I only get three complaints from that officer. He's giving out twice as many tickets, and he doesn't get nearly as many complaints. Why? Because he was selling the ticket. So, again, we have to worry about and be concerned about the arrogant or petty bureaucrat. But normally, they're just trying to enforce your rules, okay? And frankly, our rules aren't that tough. I mean, you know, what, I mean, I'm not blaming anybody, but why did we have the condition? And you guys did a great job. I don't know if it was your RDA or the city or the combination, but on this, on the slumlord situation, sure, eighty percent, ninety percent of the landlords weren't doing it, but those twenty percent, but somebody let them slide. Somebody let them slide, okay? It was a culture. And so when people aren't doing the right thing, whether it's not watering, watering improperly, or keeping up codes and standards, or not cutting their grass, or doing these things, I, I, you give them tough love. But you, you can't jump in and be the spokesperson for every, every person like that. Realize that when you're getting complaints from folks, whether they be your neighbors or your relatives, or your church member, or the business people, that it's sometimes and often a slanted conversation and it, or, or a complaint. And it's hard for you to say no to them, but the first thing to do is have it in your heart and mind. I'm not gonna accept this until I know the full story. It's when you go and you talk to your manager or your department head that you already have your mind met up. It's just, it's not fair, and it's not smart. The council's role continuing is to be proactive, not reactive. There I go again saying, calling about herding cats, so we won't say it again. You need to, you need to demand and, and measure out good, consistent reports or feedback. You need to say, "Ronaldo, some of these reports are too long, some are too short. That's hard because you may not all agree." But you may have some folks, there's a lot of material for me to cover here, you could say that about my report, but I, I, I was planning on doing a six hours on a Saturday, so I'm going fast. So it's not me that talks too long, okay? But we have situations. It's their job to make a good, interesting report to you. If they need to speak better, if they need to change their tone a little bit, you gotta work on that. Hold each other and, and staff accountable. Get progress reports. We wanna know where we are on this. I don't know if you give a monthly memorandum out or something like that, and I know you have revamped the newsletter for the community, but maybe that helps, just one-liners on some things. Remember, remember you're part of management. You need to be professional, and you need to establish a code of conduct. I think we got a slide mixed up here. Okay, one of our other little funnies here. Zen Master, "Student, do you travel much anymore, master?" Master says, "When the snow is on the ground, the tree sleeps." Student puzzled, says, "Master, excuse me, but I don't think you understood my question." The master says, "My dear student, excuse me, but I don't think you understood my answer." The other ones are pretty straightforward. What the hell does this one mean? Well, I'm not sure, but I think it means that the snow is on the ground. In other words, it's not time to move on this. I don't have the staff, okay? There's too much snow outside, okay? And I don't have any snowshoes. So the point is, is that sometimes it's not the time to move on something, sometimes you don't have the resources, sometimes the past wounds are too fresh, okay? So the manager has to think about that first and not just do it. He has to somehow communicate that to you. "I know we're doing this, we gotta do this." Now, there's other things that can't wait, okay? But actually, I had a hard time figuring out that one too, so you can trip it the way you want to. Any guesses? We have generally two types of overall areas we're concerned about. We have the ones that you folks hear the most about, okay? Routine, fundamental, basic, daily services. Area one. Area two, major, long-term policy and service issues. Fiscal, water, sewer, parks, economic development. Good management. And number two, limits the problems in number one. My note to you, you do a very good job on number one. I look at your parks, I look at your call times, your responses, your police department, I look at your garbage service basics. Good for you guys, let it go, thank you. Number two, it's not as good. Because we haven't looked at, as much as we could, at the long-range planning, long-range development, whether it be your capital improvement program, your impact fees or whatever. We have not looked at the big... We have to look now at alternative water resources. What's the major long-term plan? You've gotta look for that, and, and don't listen to anybody that says just because we got a two-hundred percent of snow melt that the, that the drought is over with. That's, that's a foolish position to take. The situation is, is water will be major. Water will be major. So what are other people doing in the industry? Do we need alternative water sources? I have my prejudices there. I think we should be strict as hell, but that's not my decision, that's your decision, that's a hard decision. Now, my concern here is that how are we doing so well on one when we only are fair on two? Well, that's because we work hard, we work smart, you listen to complaints, you get them solved. But think about now, think about your garbage service, your refuge service, you made a decision on a good company, okay? That's what I mean about long-term. You took the time, you had a so-so company, and they went out of business, okay? So you have a history of, of having those parks look great. But there's too few. That goes down into the second area. You, you see my point now? What you have, you're doing well, so you're doing the daily, weekly stuff well, but we don't have enough parks. That's because we didn't twenty-five years ago, fifteen years ago, do the right thing. It's difficult to say you can do the right thing now because you don't have the money to do it. And I could go into a long, and you know how I feel about development impact fees, so I'm not gonna give you a lecture on that. So my, my, my point here is that what you do now is going to affect all of us five, ten, twenty-five, and maybe fifty years from now. Just like I said, ignoring the east side like we did, that allowed no gutters, no sidewalks, no gutters meant that the rain went where in the street, rather than down the road to the drainage areas, and those streets were damaged, meant more money in the long run. It meant that there were no sidewalks, it wasn't the safety, the standards were lower, and therefore you made people who had economic problems anyway, second-class citizens. Sure, you improved it, but it took all that RDA money that could've been maybe spent someplace else. It's the same thing on, um, uh, if you go down, um, to the, uh, to the, uh, what is that? The road that go takes you to the, um, not your golf course, but the Madera County Country Club.
Six.
Six.
Yeah, country club drive, there you go, thank you. And you go down there and you see all those sidewalks in there now. County had to use, uh, CDBG money, okay? Because they let all those people put in without sidewalks. What the hell? What was that about? Okay, and those, that looks crappy out there, so you can't do anything to make that look any better. It's ugly. The design's ugly, there's no landscaping, it is ugly. Now you go over to the ranchos, okay? And that's not much better. Because the county let now, you got those big shot developers over at Riverstone or whatever it's called. It's not the county, that's because the developer wanted things, okay? The developer made the standards higher. So now you see sidewalks on the business section of the ranchos, right? You see sidewalks there. There weren't sidewalks there ten years ago because the county didn't require them. They had to use more money that could have been used, they had to use CDBG money, I assume, or maybe transit money, I don't know. I know that you can put certain. My, my point is, the decision that the county made twenty-five, fifty years ago to allow those developments going in, people suffered for later on, they finally corrected it, but they used money, public money, rather than the folks who should have put the development in. And that's the problem you have when you don't get that single light in, or you don't get that curb return, or you don't have that proper ingress and egress on a development because the person says it's too expensive. You'll pay for it later on. I already talked to you a little about economic development, but that's one of your roles and I just wanna talk to you about realizing that, that you have the regional versus the local situation. We have pretty good regional stuff, but it's all in Fresno, okay? You have, and medium and small communities get left behind. And we're going, we're a poorer community. We aren't Mendota, Fireball, Huron, but we're a poorer community. And I don't think we'll be able to do better until we can get what is called value-added ag. Value-added ag means those manufacturers that pay better than ag that make things for ag. Okay, like trucks and tractors and hose and things, backhoes and things like that. Plus, the California tax structure is just terrible. It, it, it hurts cities. So for, for, for those of you who are involved in the league and, and those of you who talk to league representatives, again, you know, there are, the, the, the tax structure, maybe we should put some taxes on, on, uh, on, uh, services, like a, like a haircut, I wouldn't have to pay that one. Uh, or nails. And maybe have a lower tax on products. So this whole thing about, you know, the Amazons and those things, situations, those are, you need to have policies statewide that help communities as opposed to all the money. You spend money more wisely and more efficiently than the state or federal people do. Understand that, that industry and commercial are different. Industry gives us more wealth in the long run because of the salaries, but commercial is where you get your sales tax. And that's why we become sort of like, you know, prostitutes with the big boxes because they bring in all this money because of the volume. But I don't buy that the city blew the, the target, okay? Target looked at Madera and we didn't have the demographics. One area though, that we need to look at, and you know, you all know my prejudices regarding the value of our community college. Did you know that that area was agreed to by the city and county to have an eighteen-hundred acre development? It passed the county planning commission five-oh. It passed the board of supervisors five-oh. The intention was to annex that to the city, put it in the sphere of influence. But no one ever followed up on it. I was in Kerman, I wasn't gonna get involved in Madera politics anymore, I was off the board. But there is one of your biggest economic development tools that you could have. And while you have wonderful partnerships with everybody else, I think you're just beginning to see this partnership develop. And I'm not gonna tell you step by step how to do that because your staff and some of your leaders already on the council know that. Okay, that is something that our community, not the city council necessarily, but our community has ignored and not embraced enough and brought into the fold. That is your biggest economic development potential engine in the whole area. Because of, of the potential development it could attract and because of the educational situation. We are on the verge there of becoming a full-fledged college. That means a lot in the bureaucracy of things. You can get the classes, you still can graduate, but it still says really college. But when you are let, when you're labeled a full-fledged college, you get more money, you get more attention, the, the, the vice president becomes a president. It's just, just the way the educational bureaucracy works, okay? So what you can do as a community is promote that college because our college promotions will promote Madera. It's a whole different situation and, and it's a pretty fascinating story of how we got that and it was a tough battle. Better paying jobs will help us get the, the targets. If you would have had development, if the county would have said no to River Rock, is that right? Is it River Rock? County would have said no to Riverstone and pushed some of that development there at twelve and ninety-nine. You would have had a target, you would have had about maybe twenty percent, thirty percent of that development that we see now on Herndon and Golden Gate. And it happened overnight, didn't it? So how far is the target away? Fifteen minutes? I ain't gonna put another one in Madera, not for a while. But that's why we pushed for the college there, aside from the commute of our poor students, okay? I could lecture on that and, uh, it's, it's a sore point with me. But, but again, promoting that campus, promoting that campus, getting to know those people, getting our, our young people, our return to schools people. I won't tell my standard joke on that one because it might be chauvinistic, but when I go to, when I go to the gym, I tell all the young men, all the young men, hey, the, 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 the ratio is, uh, three, three to one women, go, go to school. Uh, do we need a break or anything?
Councilman Garcia has a question.
I don't know if you, if you were gonna address it under this heading here for economic development or if you're gonna, uh, discuss it later regarding the EDC? And the role of the, the?
I wasn't going to discuss, I wasn't going to discuss the EDC because I didn't see it as part of governance. But I will say this. The first principle regarding economic development is have your city operate well and have the infrastructure to support economic development. It's like you don't sell your home. You don't put your home on the market if your lawn's not mowed and the rug is not swept, if the trees aren't pruned. So the EDC is more of a how-to-do things and doesn't fall in so much on governance. But if that is their role, if that is the role, because you don't have an economic development staff, then I would think the city needs a stronger voice in the direction of it. A stronger, more aggressive program. I'm not gonna try to evaluate that because then I could get into evaluating everything and that's not really my role tonight. I could be hired to do some research for you.
That's right.
But not really, my wife won't let me. But, so I'm not going to answer questions, except first of all, I don't have all, all the answers regarding if they're doing a good job. I don't really know. But I think there needs to be a more aggressive approach to that. And I was here one time when there was a report by the EDC staff. I was here for a different reason. And I'm thinking that was an annual report. And I'm saying, is that all you're getting, an annual report? And so I, I did speak, I thought I spoke to some council people then saying, that ought to be quarterly. That ought to be quarterly. Number one, from there, I don't know, and if there is a strategy and you are one of the principal funders, then you ought to be involved in that strategy. Okay? Um, you have a, a pretty good contact in a previous council member who's working for the, uh, Fresno EDC, okay? And there could be some situations on, what are you doing, um, Fresno EDC? And Garst, they're bigger and have a lot more staff that Madera's not doing, okay? The other factor is is that Madera EDC is funded totally by the governments. Chachilla, Madera, Madera County. And I know that Chachilla was thinking about pulling out at one time. I don't know if they did. A lot of EDCs throughout California are funded partially by the private sector. And they seem to be the ones that are more aggressive. They have about maybe thirty to forty percent of their money coming from the private sector. That would be a big sell because no one's, no one's contributing now. But they know, the progressive businesses know that by funding this, they're going to improve the labor pool, et cetera. So again, I, I'm not gonna be put in the position right now trying to say to evaluate that principally because I don't know. I haven't monitored them and I haven't researched them. But I can tell you one thing, there needs to be a more aggressive approach. You people need to have a report more often and you need to be a part of the, um, goal-setting and strategic plan. Now, I don't wanna put anybody in the spot, but you have a representative or two on the board? Okay. So that, I, I would think that would be that person's message. And, and the problem is, Santos, is that I could give you an opinion on the county, I can give you an opinion on the school district, I can give you an opinion on this. That's not a appropriate thing for me to comment now on a public meeting. We can, we can chat sometime in the future.
Thank you.
I love this one. Student, master, is it true that you can see in the dark? Master says, yes, I can. Student says, then why are you carrying a lamp? Master says, to keep other people from bumping into me. You are the masters. Especially this gentleman. You need to be that shining light. You need to be the lamp in the darkness and saying, this is the direction we're gonna go in. This is why, and I need your support on this and I'll try and sell this to you, but we're gonna go in this direction. You have an obligation to explain yourself to the community, but you also have an obligation to show the direction you're going into so they will not bump into you. Okay? The thing is, is that you by, 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 by starting with a new beginning, with starting by educating yourself on fulfilling those proper roles of council member, board of directors, then you could concentrate more on the high priorities, the methodology of getting from A to B, and then showing the community the light, okay? Now, keep on doing what you're doing in PD. It's not too exciting for you to be talking about wastewater and sewer. But when somebody tells you or argues with you, those are the two most important areas that you can do. What, what's a firefighter without water? When I was the assistant city manager here in this very room, at the end of the school year, all the teachers would, would come and, and my wife was a teacher, of course, and say, Ron, we, uh, could, could you get somebody at city hall to, to, you know, show us around city hall and those sort of things? I go, God, I said, city hall is really boring, you know? I said, go to the fire department, man, have them hold the hose or go to the PD and have them show you one of the canines. Oh, we did that in the fall. So I was stuck, okay? So we'd gather there, there'd always be some moms and stuff, and so I had them play roles. I had them, certain people would be counsel and certain people would be, um, and we are gonna wrap this up about eight fifteen, folks, so. And I know you got a meeting. And so certain people would be audience, certain people would be, um, uh, complainers, okay? And they were your staff. And so the little boy would get up, you know, second or third grader. What are we gonna do about lunches? I don't like the soggy. Okay, I tried to explain them, the mothers were cracking up. I tried to explain to them, the school, the city doesn't do lunches, you know? Then they would talk about Little League, they'd talk about the parks and that kind of stuff. And so what I would do, I'd give him my water sewer lecture, right? Okay. And about a week later, I got a note from a kid. And it was in, and it was on a piece of paper and then it had a house on it. Then it had a line from the dirt going underground to the house and the boy put water. And then it had another line from the line going out and the arrow going up had sewer. I was so happy that I'd gotten through to somebody, it was so cute. I had that picture in my office for years. Water and sewer are hard to sell to people. Water's a little bit easier because it's the top priority on your billing. But if you don't, one area about, council member, is about water and sewer. Your industrial people who come in are going to ask about those things. And I think you probably need to look at the sewer system as seriously as you've looked at the water system. And that is so important because it's not that fire and police aren't important, it's that everybody sees them. So they get a lot of attention, okay? And those are our heroes because they, 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 they're so important in the first responders. But on a day-to-day basis, you're not gonna grow. You're not gonna be healthy if you don't take care of those water and sewer situations. And have the appropriate systems in place that are not only based upon your user fees, they're based upon user fees to a quite extent, but the appropriate funding in sources, grants, loans, capital improvement, development impact fees and consumer fees. So keep those people from bumping into you and, and shine brightly. Okay, shifting a little bit to the city manager. The, the, the manager, what does a manager do? Well, first of all, manager must treat all the councilmen equitably. Doesn't mean he likes them all equitably, but as far as his time and his attention. Provides professional advice, takes direction as from the body. Now, I think there's, there, there could be a tendency because there's more exposure with the mayor on agenda development and things like that. So don't worry about that, but when it comes, because that's gonna happen, you're gonna have more attention with the mayor because the mayor has particular roles. And that may be involved with the agenda, maybe as sometimes a spokesperson for the council. But regarding the meeting and answering questions and regarding the policies, it's you seven. It's what compromises you come together on. Manager loves seven oh votes, but he's not gonna always get them. He is your manager from your day-to-day operations, so stay the hell out of them. Just, you know, point banks, try and stay the hell out of them. Recruits, hires, terminates, supervises staff. And remember that you have a highly structured system that handles these, these, all these three situations. You have a merit system, a civil service system that, that and, and my, my experience, the same way with hiring your city manager, that going through this, see, this is what I did. This is what I did, uh, for fifteen years, part of my job in Madera was personnel director. The, the job that I had as overseer at the college as personnel commission involved this. And my experience is that cream does come to the, rise to the top, okay? And that's why you let the final stages, the manager hire someone. See, back when, back when I was personnel director for the city of Madera, we'd have hundreds, hundreds of people apply for firefighters, okay? And we'd have a situation where you had, um, maybe, maybe ten people. And, and there was physical agility, there was, uh, there was, um, written tests and interviews. And then you had maybe, um, ten, fifteen people grouped between ninety-five percent and eighty-eight percent. Make it only hire one. So back then, the rule now is, is more flexible. I think it's the rule of the list. You could only send the top three people to the manager to hire, okay? Well, wait a minute. You tell me somebody eighty-eight percent is, is that much, is not, is not as good as a guy, person ninety-three percent? So we set up a system and modified our personnel rules to say that if there were no women or classified minorities in the top three, that you could bring up more people. Now that you have the rule of the list, I don't think you have to hire from the top three. My point is, is you can do progressive things to get a workforce that looks more like the community. But make sure you do it through your civil service. If you think you're having some problems, make sure that you, that you, that you go through your civil service system and use your civil service system. You have a system in place is what we're saying. Use those, or if you don't, if you don't wanna use them, then get rid of it. The, the manager carries out the council policy. The, the manager carries out the council policies, prepares budget, develops partnerships. And this is where the leadership area comes in. You have developed your own partnerships with, with board members and unified school district members, et cetera, but your city manager has to develop those partnerships with the CAOs of those organizations because they're the ones who implement and get things done. And make sure to emphasize that to your city manager, I think he already understands that. Binks forth ideas, policies, and promotes them, and he also adheres to a code of ethics, and there's, there's standard ones that should be, can be adopted and maybe modified for your own city. And becomes involved in community and sets examples, exhibits leadership. When I say exhibit leadership, you really have the temperament that allows, I don't know, I'm not making, I'm asking very generically, not specifically. You have the temperament as a body to allow your manager to become a leader. And the situation is, if you're always stepping in front of the manager, if you're the show rather than the manager, get a balance there. Get a balance there. You need, if you want to continue your mission, you need to get reelected. You need to be in the paper, you need to make the public appearance. There's nothing wrong with that, that's good. But your manager needs to be out there in front, or at least behind-the-scenes person who is leading that meeting, who's negotiating that. You don't know what sort of side deals people are making as individual board members in council meetings. You don't need side deals because you've got to come back and sell it to all of you, and that's the best salesman you have. The other aspect, and I said this time and time again, so I'm not going to make more reference to it, except that, that person coordinates to a certain extent the workload of the city clerk and the city attorney. And you have to respect that and realize that if you're contacting your city, I don't know if you've set up some rules yet. When I first went to Kerman, I told them, nobody could speak to the city, city attorney except me, not even the department head, because we had these bills that were ridiculous. We cut them in half the first year. Okay? So, you should have some standards for that because, again, you've got a great city attorney, but that clock's going to run, her time's valuable. Okay? So, don't be, don't be lobbying the city attorney. Don't be asking the city attorney, individual, ask, ask the city attorney, ask her right here, right here in this meeting. That's when you want to bring the city attorney. You guys feel different in that, then express that differently sometime to the council. Won't work, by the way. You don't do it that way. That's what I mean by it can be counterproductive and expensive. One message or one, one rule, sometimes the message is not what you want to hear, the answer is even more difficult to accept, but you got to ask it. But don't hold the grudge because of that. Okay? The, your city manager has, has a method behind these ma, this madness of his? Have some faith. And again, you won't be a great council or a great city without a great city manager. There's a council management relationship that I put ten points in. I could redo this and make eight points, I could redo it again and make twelve points. So, bear with me. Together as a team, you establish the priorities. The city manager needs to place the ideas and the plans before the council. They just don't come out, but you know what? Most of those are self-evident. Okay? And that's not the difficult part. The difficult part is how to do the implementation and what resources. At this point, we may not have the public works department we need. We may not have the chief of police that we need. We may not, and I know we do, but we may not have the planning department. So, I can't do those now because if I do that, I will take away from something else. Sure, your manager has all this expert planning development expertise, but to take away from the city management goals would be difficult. Remember that when you're about implementing the vision and goals, if the council is continually rejecting the manager, that everybody else is going to figure that out. Okay? Your, your, your employees will figure it out, the public will figure it out, the other agencies will figure it out, and the business community will figure it out. Okay? So, you've taken your quarterback and you say, oh, by the way, you got to only throw with your left hand if you're right-handed. You, you need to allow that manager to have some authority, a lot of authority. And what will happen is you'll get this from folks. Who's running this city anyway? This guy? You know, are you guys running the city? Got that all the time in Kerman. Got it all the time. I think he saw the success that we had. Even the folks who said it after a while joked about it and didn't mean it, but there was that impression. So, so this is why in the public situation, you've got to make your statement strong. And you can say, although I, I, I don't accept our decision, I was a minority vote, I'm not going to be a cheerleader for you on this. That's okay. Okay, Jeanne, but for the overall mission, for the overall goals, when those fees come out or those standards come out, you know, if somebody doesn't like what you're doing, you aren't doing, if sometimes somebody doesn't like what you're doing, you're just not doing a good job. Okay? If you don't get any criticism, you're not doing a good job because you're going to offend somebody some of the time. That's, you know, don't be a council member if you don't want to hear some criticism because you are. Your manager becomes powerless if you continue to reject. You're off-base, you guys aren't together. The other items of this, this is the ten. We said it before, it's time to move forward, address the issues facing the city, and ask yourself if we need a goals focusing workshop. I don't mean a goals development. You have your goals, you know what the goals are, but how do we get from A to B? What resources do we want? Do we need this staff before that staff? Do we need to put this aside? Do we need to say that, um, we need to be, have better code enforcement? We need to have better, um, building standards? Quick, quick, quick little story, and, and this wasn't one of, uh, Ronaldo's best points in his interview, but I was part of a citizen committee, um, that, um, interviewed your, your city manager candidates. And so, someone asked Ronaldo the question of, well, what have you noticed the most change in the community since you've been gone? Because he grew up here, we all know he grew up here, right? And I think it caught him off-guard a little bit because it wasn't a good answer. The answer was, oh, well, I see that they've, they've redone the, the belly in. Okay. And, but the second part of the answer was great. Well, what do you think of it? Well, it's nice, but those windows, they could have been done so much better. I can't drive by the damn place without noticing that the windows aren't done well. Okay? What I'm saying is that, is that this man pays attention to detail. Okay? That's the kind of feedback that you need because some of us can't see that until we see it. Okay? I would have never, but now I understand it completely. My wife goes by there and says, there's those damn windows. Okay, but I, I'm, I'm just trying to point out, I think he could have mentioned something else like the growth or whatever. Okay? But my point is, is that he caught that because that person, that individual, has the training for design that I don't have. You know? It's like when you go to a good museum and somebody ma, makes you, and you remember how that teacher talked to that art class, and all of a sudden you said, yeah, now I see it. Now I understand. Okay? And that's the epiphany I had about these windows because he had the vision to say right away, that's a nice building, but all they, all they, a couple thousand dollars would have done such a nicer job. I don't know if you remember that interview or not. I got a kick out of it, though. And I didn't mean to say that you didn't have a good interview, you had a very good interview. That was just a real funny answer. My, my idea behind there is that you have to be aware of the expertise, but you can't do it all. And the last point, I think, is that other people are doing certain jobs that aren't yours. Collaboration, you need a pat on the back for that. And the community, I hope, realizes it, and any chance you get to promote that is great. Big Brothers and Sisters, United Way, the partnership with Madera Unified School District, thank you. That's good government because in a small, especially in a smaller community, you can't do it by yourself. You have strong, impressive partnerships, the one with the community college has to be grown, just has to be done there. I'm meeting with the new president tomorrow, and I'll send my regards for all of you. But I hope that you guys, if you haven't had a tour of that campus, let's arrange one. If they haven't made a, an update progress report to you, let's have one. And we have to, uh, develop a stronger bond. What a great resource. Evaluating the city manager, um, we're going to wrap up in about twelve minutes, I promise you, because you need to go on your other meeting. Do not let one factor, Andy, is that not right or what? Do we need, do we need to, um, uh, take a break and, and say the meeting will start late or what?
Do we have to by law? Is that what you're saying or?
I'm asking you, I'll wrap, I'll wrap up in about twelve minutes. What I'm saying is that that's only fifteen minutes after your scheduled meeting. Do you have to do or say anything as far as announcement?
I'd, I'd hate to come back just for another twelve minutes. If it's okay with Ms. Shaw, who's in the audience, if we could just kind of wrap it up, Ron, in another ten or twelve, that would be my suggestion, but I'm one of seven. How does the council feel? Would you rather adjourn and, and to the housing authority meeting and come back and finish up the workshop?
Normally, if you would have a public comment portion, you would have to open it, but we don't have one here, right?
We don't.
So...
I'll wrap up in twelve minutes.
Can you wrap up sooner?
Twelve, I'll wrap up in eleven.
Okay.
Okay, let me try. Okay. The, the, uh, these are some of the, the criteria regarding evaluating the city manager. Uh, I'm not going to go over each one, but, but right here towards the end, appreciating legitimate differences of community perspective and professional standards, an outside developer and regional, national chains. Realize that your staff is not trying to be arrogant or trying to say that we're not good. It's just that Madera, and I'll say it as a lifelong resident, doesn't have a history of strong development standards. And it's not going to hurt you to have stronger standards, it's going to help you. It's going to help you in economic development, and it's going to be a more attractive city. And don't blame the city manager or the staff for instituting your new rules if you have them. So, you don't want to always hear yes from your city manager. And when you're, when you're doing the evaluation, you don't make mountains out of mountain, mountains out of molehills, and you're looking for quality of service, not your individual liking department heads. It'd be nice, but it doesn't have to be necessary. Don't expect the city manager to take sides with your own internal disputes, and don't jump to conclusions when a citizen complains because you may be getting half the story. And that's one of the hardest things. Disagree with the recommendations, but don't attack the messenger. The goals are mutual, but don't keep on playing the old records, go forth with a clean state. Look at what you're doing right now and how you can improve it rather than creating a whole new laundry list. It's not the time for the new laundry list because you have a depleted staff. When you look at your standards, set the bar higher and ask your manager to do that in all aspects, not just building standards. And I don't know, I don't think you need an evaluation more than a couple times a year. One formal and one a progress report. Maybe, maybe in the earlier first year, it might be a little bit more. There are seven ways, I should have put eight, and I'll tell you what those are. Ways, the areas that you're looking at. Staff reports, presentation at council meeting and delivery, feedback, follow-up, quality of implementation. These are areas that we are measuring the city manager. Relationship with the community agencies. You don't have to agree with all of them all the time, but you need relationships, team building. Setting long-range agenda, fiscal responsibility, staff management, and, and the eighth one I should have on there, I'm council interaction. These are, you don't need more than the, than these eight when you're evaluating your city manager. Some do's and don'ts. Do not evaluate a single issue or an event, and we're talking about the evaluation of the city manager. Undermine the CAO. Do not establish impossible goals and expect miracles. Do not believe every negative story, and do not hold grudge because your pet issue was not endorsed. Some of the do's are, explain why you're unhappy from a decision of performance. Ask for advice, give your opinion. Understand that personnel issues are very difficult, have, especially in the public sector, have complex legal due process issues, and that you have a civil service commission. Be fair, forthright, consistent, but demanding. Listen to employees and employee groups, but realize that you sometimes are getting a percent, uh, uh, an exaggerated self-interest view. Any employee that's not trying to get a better deal is not doing their job as a representative or a union or association representative. But realize that there's problems with health insurance and PERS in our entire state, not just in Madera. And realize that that is part of the total compensation. And never look at, at just wages, look at the total package. I think I'm going to skip this page because we already, this is just a summary of the basics, just the last line which is really important. Remember the council is the board of directors for a large, multimillion-dollar organization, corporation. That is a heavy burden, and that is more, and the most important aspect of that because you are now performing the services and building for the future. You need to ask yourself, what are you looking for? Why are you looking for more knowledge when you do not pay attention to what you already know? That's not an accusation of you, that is a comment about society in general and that you could fall victim to. You know stuff, and sometimes we just kick it down the road because the decisions are too hard. In summary, our society, and to an extent, the city of Madera, has a hostility towards expertise because we think sometimes that these people think they're better than us. Oh, you've got your master's degree, you have this degree, but I live here, I know. But like a doctor or engineer or a plumber or electrician, the staff usually has an expertise in what they're talking about, but it's their job to show you and not be arrogant about it. We suffer, I think, in our co, in our country from a cognitive dissidence. And what that means is that the facts presented to us are conflicting with our prejudice, our own known, we know that these government people are lazy, we know this, we know that. It's, it's the same reaction to climate science. They don't, okay, hell with the, hell with the knowledge, hell with, hell with the information, I don't believe it. I don't give a damn what you believe. What are the facts? And the situation here is that we ha, we're getting to have an anti-science, anti-information society that's affecting us here in Madera. What staff has to realize, there's a method to that presentation that cannot be at least bit arrogant or I know better than you. The attitude should be, I have the information and I'm presenting it in the best fashion I know how. Think in terms of that we're, we're in a rowboat race, okay? And there's seven of you rowers. And you individual rowers, you may, you may be one of the best individual rowers in the nation, but you're not rowing by yourself. And you have a Coxwin, Coxwing? Is that how you pronounce that? The guy goes, row, row, row. Okay? That's your manager. If you're not open to the instructions about rowing together as a team, you'll lose the I think I want to end up by saying, when people criticize you and tell you to act more like a business, you tell them to hold their, their board meetings in public, you tell them to, um, have a situation where the entire city can openly criticize you or praise you, et cetera. It's a different, a, a public business is different, and your methods for input and decision-making are different, but you do want to practice the best business practices you can apply. So, in closing, it doesn't make sense to hire smart people and tell them what to do. So, in closing, it doesn't make sense to hire smart people and tell them what to do. We hire smart people so they can tell us what to do. I would change that, and they say, they can recommend to us what to do. I sure appreciate your attention, I know that you guys have a busy schedule and another meeting, so I'll sign out, and, um, will be available to you at different times, uh, for your pleasure. Thank you, Ronaldo. Hilda, nice meeting you formally.
Great, Ron, thank you very much, very informative, really appreciate that.
So, you need to close this session up and...
Exactly. With that, I will adjourn the special council meeting.